All right, sorry about that, I forgot the mics. Everybody want to welcome the new council and as the new chairman, I'm trying to get used to a few new pieces of technology, so bear with me if there's a button or two I need to push. But, but right now, we are at the awards recognition of distinguished guests by city council members. Do any council members have awards recognitions or distinguished guests? And we'll start with Councilman Flurry in District E.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Bill Cooksey to come forward if you would please. Ms. Stacy Kuba and Mr. Robert Osborne, would you please come also? Mayor and members of the city council, these two members of the Shreveport Airport Authority management team were recently nationally recognized in a leading aviation publication. Downtown Airport Manager, Ms. Stacy Kuba, and the Airport Project Manager, Mr. Robert Osborne, were chosen from hundreds of nationwide entries as two of Airport Business Magazine's 40 Under 40 of Aviation Professionals of 2014. I just want to say how much we appreciate what you do for the city and for this recognition, I want to say congratulations. Bill, would you like to add anything?
Absolutely, thank you Councilmen, rest of the council, Mayor and Mr. Sibley. We are very honored to have Mr. Osborne and Ms. Kuba honored. They have performed an incredible job for years for Airport Authority in a variety of roles. Ms. Kuba started as Operations Specialist at Shreveport Regional. She was then promoted to Operations Superintendent. During the process, she earned her master's degree and then went on to become an accredited airport executive, which I'm actually going through that course right now. I can tell you, it's tough, so my hat is off to her. Very tough program and she is one of the few what we call AAEs in the state of Louisiana. Mr. Osborne joined our staff about, what, almost four years ago? As he's an engineer, electrical engineer, as our projects manager. And he jumped in and quickly went to work as we restructure our capital program for both airports. And he has done an incredible job on a variety of projects, anything from access control to taxiways and drainage to fencing, runway protection zones. If you throw it at him, he knows it. Stacy and Robert have both really helped us turn a lot of things around for both airports. Stacy, for her efforts, was promoted to Downtown Airport Manager just a little over two years ago. And has done an incredible job building on the momentum we had at Downtown Airport. So it's an honor that they were recognized in this magazine, Airport Business Magazine is one of the leading industry publications for airports and the aviation industry. So to have them recognized out of 40 people in this industry and two from Shreveport says a lot. So we're honored with that and thank you for recognizing.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you both. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up, we have Stephanie Lynch, District F.
Yes, of course, everyone here is distinguished and thank you all for coming down, but I do want to recognize one distinguished gentleman that's in the audience right now. That's my father, Jimmy Lynch.
We're here.
Stand up there. Certainly, I'm glad that he's here today for my first city council meeting. And, you know, my first leadership position was as Forest Club President in the fourth grade at Oak Park Elementary. But my first run for office, I guess, so to speak, was as for student council at Huntington High School. And my daddy made my first sign for me. And so, thank you for being here and also his wife is with him, Ms. Beverly. All right, thank you all for coming.
Thank you so much. I don't see any other council members right now, but I will say, from my part, wanted to extend our sympathies to the family of Gary Lofton, who lost his daughter this week rather unexpectedly. And they're doing memorial services for her today, so, or at least a visitation. So, want to express our sympathies to Gary and his family. Also, want to just acknowledge that there is a meeting tonight at the Valencia Community Center at 6:00 regarding the new proposal from the school board. And so, there are people in the Stotter Hill community who are going to be coming out to ask questions and receive information about that tonight, for those out there who may be viewing and may be interested. Certainly, in District B, there are a number of people with questions about that and that would be a good opportunity to get some answers and have some discussion on that subject. And thirdly, just want to mention that, and congratulate the organizers of the Louisiana Film Prize tonight. They are announcing their kickoff of this year's Louisiana Film Prize. It has been a tremendous success and we're very proud of the work that they've done and happy to be a partner on that in the past and look forward to another successful year of that for them. So, just want to start out by mentioning those. And one more, just extension of sympathy, if I could, to the elderly couple who were victims of smoke inhalation. And we thought they may be able to survive from a fire that was on 68th Street last week, but both of them unfortunately died from, as a result of that accident. So, just our sympathies go out to their families as well.
I have one thing.
And Councilman Jenkins?
Wanted to congratulate my good friend Brian Barber, who is getting sworn in today as a city judge. So, depending how the time goes, they may try to stop by his event, but it's great for City of Shreveport, obviously he replaces Judge Kelly, who had been there for a long, long distinguished career in that position and certainly look forward to working with Brian in the future.
Wonderful. And if there are no other comments from council at this point in time, Mayor Tyler, do you have any awards or recognitions?
Well, we don't have any awards today, but I want to just reiterate what I said yesterday. We want to welcome all of the members who are here today, either in person, to the meeting. And also, just I want to say thank you for all of the support you've given us. And we are off and running. But we did mention yesterday also that we will be giving two departmental reports, or progress reports, each month for the council and for the members of our community, so that you will have an idea of where we are, all of the current projects and things that you've already approved with funding for us to do. But we will be moving ahead with those. And today, we're going to start out with Water and Sewage, I think we mentioned that yesterday, with Mrs. Barbara Featherstone. And at this time, if it's, if it's okay, we're going to bring Ms. Barbara up and ask her to give you a progress report on the consent decree and also give the good news from EPA that we want to share with our community.
Absolutely, thank you so much. And I might add, there was some question, we were trying to get some information from Arlena Akri about some legislation that's on the agenda today. And I understand her schedule may be tight, so after Barbara is completed, we may want to do that at this point on the agenda as well.
Okay, but would you like to have her come first and then do Barbara afterward?
Sure.
Because I know that Arlena is going to be representing us tonight at the kickoff of the film prize.
That may be appropriate.
Thank you.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you all and welcome to our new council members. And I've been with the city now 16 years and eight of, the first eight years were economic development and this latter part, eight years has been in the film office. So, but we're working on multiple things with Mayor Tyler. And I put a new brochure, Mayor, I left you one too. This is hot off the press, this is our new film brochure and how we promote Shreveport Bossier and the region for film office. So, part of our incentives is to make it easy to film here and that's what this resolution is about. So I don't know if you all need to read the resolution, if you have questions for me or...
No.
We're just renewing it for the third time.
I think one of the questions were, what kind of activities do you normally suspend?
Well, the common one is, you all have probably seen all the yellow signs around town. It's, I think we have an ordinance that you can't, you're not supposed to do, you know, put signs on the post. And we allow them to do that. And of course, they take it down. So that's one, one thing that we do quite often. Every film has to give directions on locations because locations are all over our city. So that's one of the examples that we do. We don't typically do a whole lot, but when we need it, we need it. So it's there because it's a very timely process. When I get the call, it's always last minute, trust me. So it's like we try to make it easy for the film productions to go smooth and quickly.
Councilman Bradford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jacob, thank you for coming. There was an item that was, that was brought to my attention in regards to this resolution. It had something to do with maybe an airplane landing in Cross Lake, is that, is that my understanding?
Yes, and, and I don't recall actually which project that was right now, but that was one thing that did come up.
Okay, and my concern was that since Cross Lake is our water supply and I don't think, intentionally, we allow such activity, have you researched the health and safety risks of doing that?
I didn't make that decision to do that, but I think we did grant them the permission to do that at that time.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bradford, ordinarily, when a request like that comes in, it gets vetted by the appropriate department to make sure that it's not an issue. I don't know the specific situation, but ordinarily, that's what would happen. If Ms. Akri gets a request like that, it will get vetted by police, by water, by everybody who may be impacted by that. And Arlene, do you recall when that happened?
I want to say it was early on, Dale, but I do remember, you know, getting that call. And I'll tell you, the other thing is, Councilman, that we do do, you may not know, we're very concerned about safety and everything that goes on with our city. We actually have an official fireman and police officer that attend location meetings prior to, but some locations do pop up. So, safety is always a concern and security.
And my follow-up question is that, and I raised this question at one of our work sessions, let's say the worst-case scenario. And I understand there's a difference between gasoline, which I bought, speedboats and everything that frequent that lake uses, spilling into the water. And then there's another issue dealing with jet fuel. And if what you're saying is correct, then I'm going to say, not assume, say that the parties that vetted this have given clearance to if and when this occurs, that all scenarios in which safety and health could be...
Yes, sir.
...have been, has been put in place.
Absolutely.
And you feel comfortable with this happening?
Yes, and we probably will never get that request again. That's real freaky, I mean, that we get even something like that. But we just wanted to have this in place, just in case something comes up that is, you know, because typically, when you go to council, it takes a while, we have to wait for the next council meeting. It might be a two-reader and it might take a while. So that's why we have that. So the mayor will be contacting the appropriate departments to make those decisions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I see no other questions, so thank you very much.
Yeah, and thanks for mentioning LA Film Prize. It starts at 7:00 at Art Space, so if you all finish, we would love for you to come by. We do support LA Film Prize and this is, it gets bigger and bigger every year, so we'd love to see you there if you can. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Arlene. All right, now Barbara.
Good afternoon, council. Welcome, new council members. I've had a number of opportunities to speak in front of the council, as well as at various council committees, talking about what we do as a department and the things that we do that interact with council. I'm here today, as the mayor said, I'm the first of the department updates and I'm very excited about that. We have a number of things going on, we have some good news and then just some general updates on where we are. What I'd like to talk to you about first is, is about the consent decree. That's something that a lot of you saw in the news. We implemented rate increases over time because of that consent decree to deal with those infrastructure issues. But basically, the official consent decree was entered into last May and that started the clock ticking on a number of different items. The bulk of the consent decree is to go out and evaluate our entire sewer system in five different phases. And those phases are made up of different areas of the city, from the worst to the not as bad, generally speaking. And EPA is the one that selected those areas. We were not, those aren't areas that we picked, it was based on historical issues, flow metering, a number of economic scenarios as far as our household income. They looked at low-income areas and they selected this list. The first area that we're working in is in Cedar Grove Basin. And the Cedar Grove Basin is generally kind of bounded by the inner loop east and north to I-20 over to I-49, is the general area. It's a huge basin. Each of our phases are about a million feet of sewer. So we are finishing the work in that basin with regards to the investigatory work, the TV work, the smoke testing. We put that all out previously, news releases, I think the mayor went out when we kicked off the smoke testing. It can get quite exciting. The Fire Department, the Police Department are involved in all of our coordination meetings on that. And we've actually started the work in Phase Two, to begin that second set of about a million feet of sewer mains. And that's starting in the northern part of the city, just north of I-20 and I-220, going to the north. So we're excited about that and we're ahead of schedule. We have been in constant contact with EPA with regards to our schedule. We met with EPA last month in December in Dallas. We had a great meeting. We have been kind of negotiating some of the design constraints within the consent decree that affect the bottom line of what we will have to spend in the future. And we were able to negotiate and provide an approach that impacts that bottom line and we feel very comfortable, after our meeting, EPA followed up in writing that they approved our approach, which is a little bit less restrictive than what they had originally proposed. And as such, we, you know, will save millions of dollars in potential construction costs because we looked at it from a common sense approach. We worked with the engineering firm to make sure that we weren't doing anything more than what we had to, to meet the goals of the consent decree, which is to reduce and eliminate sanitary sewer overflows. So we're very excited about that. We're getting ready to kick off the design portion of those projects in the Cedar Grove Basin. Those projects have to be completely designed and constructed by the end of 2017, so we're on a timeframe. But we are a little bit ahead of schedule and we're trying to keep it that way with regards to those projects. So, we anticipate construction starting in that basin sometime late this summer. So you'll see lots of orange cones and barricades, unfortunately. Fortunately, on the other hand, that's our worst area of the system and those folks will see some relief within a couple of years when we get a heavy rain. So we're very excited about that. We have a number of other projects, not just sewer. We have a number of projects that were in the 2011 bond issue and subsequently, the second sale of that bond. Some have been completed, we have some lift station projects completed, we have some projects out of the Amos Treatment Plant that have been completed under those, under that funding. We're kicking off some design and some construction now that the second sale is moving forward, getting ready to put some more work out on the streets. So we're, again, excited about that. The $75 million bond issue that we did at the very end of last year, some of those projects are going to address the water main issues that we have. As you're aware, the bond issue, the general obligation bond issue, did not address water distribution improvements. We had some money spent at the treatment plant, but nothing in the distribution system. And obviously, in the news, the past few weeks, a lot of water main breaks, unfortunately, and those impact folks directly when they go to turn the faucet on and nothing comes out. With the rain, the wet soil on top of those water mains that are aging and have some issues anyway, they blow and we're out there fixing it, kind of making a big mess. We have a plan that we've been working on that now will be funded with the $75 million. Our staff keeps up with where those breaks are. We look at, you know, do we need to just Band-Aid this section or is this an area that needs full replacement? So with that bond issue, we're actually, instead of doing those circle seals and those other little things we do to keep things flowing, we will actually be replacing whole segments of the water distribution system. So we're very excited about that. That will be further, that process will be further optimized with the new asset management system. We are kicking off that project in our department with our Field Operations Group, which is the piping group, in February. The consultant is coming in to implement that system for us. And we will finish out the year with the water plant and the wastewater side. So, we will all be on, on a great computer software system that will be map-based, it'll be so much easier to, you know, put those monies in those areas where you see the little red dots. We've had a break here, a break here, a break here, let's do a project. It's going to make that process that much better. As the other departments come onboard, particularly with what was done with the pavement management system, we're going to be able to coordinate those efforts much better. When Streets and Drainage has a large capital project, we've been working with them to do as much as we can ahead of time to look at our infrastructure. We're TB'ing the sewers when they do a large project. We're looking at our work order system, have we had issues with that water main? And we're working with them to repair or replace that buried infrastructure underneath those streets before we do the street work.
So that if the ground is already torn up, it's a good time to go in and do the work?
Right, right. And a lot of times, our infrastructure is on the side. It's not impacted, we don't impact their work and it's not a big deal. But when our sewer main is obviously running down the middle of the street, sewer is the easiest thing to go in and investigate, we can TB' it. And if we have some issues, we can do that while they have the streets tore up and not impact anyone twice. We don't always get it right. Again, our infrastructure is buried, particularly water. If we haven't had an issue with a segment of water main, they do a street, a whole street segment, and then we have a problem, it's almost impossible to predict that. But we are trying to coordinate all of our efforts with Public Works, Engineering in particular. And we spend a lot of time with the Engineering Department. So we're all just very excited about that. You're going to start seeing a lot more work out there. We have, working with Engineering, we have a new website and it is called Clean Waters Shreveport. And you can get to it either from the city's main webpage under Departments and it, or you can do www.cleewatersshreveport.com. Has all of our projects, has all the consent decree documents, has maps, it shows where we're doing work. It's going to be updated on a regular basis. We have a calendar, has all of our information on what's bidding, pre-bid meetings, everything that we're doing on the capital side and working very closely, obviously, with Engineering on that. They're the ones doing that work. So we're excited about that. You can see the projects on a map. And that will continue to get better and better as, as we go through this process. So, lots of exciting news. The last thing I'd like to touch on is, is the rate increase. I sent council an email last night with attachments, as you requested, with the presentation we gave to the Infrastructure Committee in November concerning the rates. We spent a lot of time with the Infrastructure Committee and the council on rates prior to them going into effect. And one of the things that council wanted to look at was, okay, we have this rate structure, we know we have this much money that we need to fund these improvements. Now, is there some way we can look at that rate structure other than water costs this much and sewer costs this much? We wanted to look at conservation rates. If you use less water, maybe you should be rewarded for using less water. In addition, we also wanted to look at how our rate structure was set up with the monthly fees. When we had a, for us, a bad year last year, it rained a lot, it was cool. Water usage was one of the lowest water usage years in at least 10 years, if not further back. That impacts our revenues. So what we looked at was working with a consultant that did the rate structure, how can we maintain a little bit more stable revenue? So we had them increase the monthly fee and reduce the actual quantity charges. And so that's going to keep, it's revenue neutral, our revenues will be the same under the previous rate structure as this one. However, it should stabilize what comes in in those years where we do see the wet weather. So, that was basically the purpose of the ordinance that was introduced and actually adopted last year for the water conservation rates. The issue and the reason that you are dealing with another ordinance on 164 today, we had an amendment to that ordinance that was to be voted on and it didn't get voted on. There was a date issue and the city's Attorney's Office wanted us to include, we had taken out the historical rates and she felt those needed to be put back in. So the amendment that you have today basically puts those historical rates in, fixes a typo that I had on a date, which is pretty important. And it also, because of the timing, it wasn't, it's not being adopted until now, we had to change the date on the implementation of the conservation rates. Instead of January 1, it will be February 1. Folks will see that rate increase in sewer, since it was already in place, on their January bills, they will see it in February when they get the bills for January. And then the water conservation rates, if adopted today, will take effect in February 1, an implementation date of February 1. And they'll see those on their March bills. We will do an insert in the February bills that, like we did when we had the first rate increase. Kind of gives an outline of what we did, why we're doing it, and some calculation, calculations for their tiered rates. So they know that when they're using less than 6,000 gallons of water, they're only paying $1.63 a thousand and that the monthly fee is going up. And so, we'll have a little bit more information for them on those water conservation rates in addition to just kind of what we're doing in general. And that'll be an insert in the February bills.
Thank you so much. And, you know, additionally, I would like to just mention, I was pleased to see an inspector from Water and Sewage join us on the most recent T-Bone sweep. And I think that from the results that I heard from Property Standards, they were able to identify more than 25 illegally hooked up accounts and they were able to remove those meters and with the hope being that these people will get legally hooked up.
We had, we had five phone calls the next day to set up water service.
Which is... Which is precisely what we'd like to see.
And, and we, we're very excited about working with Property Standards with Dorothy. She has more energy than I could possibly ever have. And, we've, we've kind of touched, we've met with her. We've went kind of tippy-toed into the sweeps and this was our first one, full-blown, kind of more prepared. Our staff was so excited to be out there with everyone else. We're looking at ways that, that we can even up the ante and what we can do on those sweeps. There's another one coming up in another week and a half, or a little over a week. So, we plan to be there in full force. Working with Property Standards, working with Streets and Drainage, obviously, engineering, even SPAR, we are coordinating, that's one of the things that's very important to me is to coordinate with other departments. We are, even though we serve customers, we also serve the city. And, we, you know, we support all of the other departments and, you know, try to work with that can-do attitude. You know, the first thing, what can we do to help? Yes, maybe it's not a water sewer issue, but we may have someone that can help out. And, that's what we try to do.
Well, it seemed to be a very good success.
We're very excited about it.
Working together produces good results.
We're very excited about it.
Glad to see y'all were doing that. It was, congratulations. Any council members, councilmen? Bradford, SC.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for a very enlightening report. As a, you councilperson, you really sort of eased some of my anxieties about the consent decree. I was thinking the time was ticking fast and what it was, that we caught up in, in a timeframe that we couldn't honor. So, thank you for that. You mentioned several other projects in addition to the, the work that has to be done to satisfy the consent decree.
Yes.
In your estimation, we're talking 2017, how much cost of money do you see that would be spent between now, then, including all the capital projects?
We are currently, if you add in the, the currently funded, the second sale of the 2011 bond in 2014, with the, the revenue bond that we did and what we anticipate to do between now and 2017, probably close to $100 million, if not a little bit more, between now and 2017. It's a significant amount of funding. When you look at the construction that will start the first basin, we're anticipating anywhere from 50 to $90 million just in the sewer costs. We're looking at a number of water distribution, $5 to $10 million in the distribution system. Other projects at the AMES plant that need to be done. So, it's, it's, and then again, the, the GOB bond money, which are for specific projects. Stoner Forest Main, Swallow Mall Bayou Pump Station, Wallace Forest Main, and the ones that haven't even started design yet because that's the funding we just sold. It's a significant amount, you know, significant amount of funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. All right. I see no other questions from council members right now. Mayor Tyler, did you have any additional communications?
No, I do not today. I just want to thank Ms. Featherstone for giving that report. And, I think you will see as members of the council and members of our community, we're going to be coordinating more of our efforts across departments. That's one of the commitments we made because efficiency is the name of the game. And, if you are efficient, we can save resources and we can also provide better services, we think, to our citizens. So, the coordination is coming together and we've asked staff to make sure that, you know, that takes place and we're going to be checking, we're going to be accountable. So, she's the first report. The next report, of course, is on the 27th and we'll have an update on Streets and Drainage at that time. And, you'll also get an idea of what's going on there and the projects that we have on the books that are not complete, but you will see the coordination across departments. So, thank you today for that report.
Thank you for the communications. It was very helpful. Dale.
Mr. Chairman, one question, please. We do have our FA and Bond Council here for Resolution 2. Any questions? And, you know, Mr. Bowles charges by the hour, so if we can get him in and out quickly. So, if it's okay with the council.
That's appropriate.
Go ahead and bring him forward for any questions on Resolution 2.
Yeah, that's absolutely appropriate. Are there any questions right now for Resolution 2, which is under Section 9 on your agendas? Sure, they're here to ensure that the fees are agreed to.
As you said, it's subjective. Bill Bowles, Bowles Law Firm. I want to clarify, do not charge by the hour.
You know, we have to teach you all your deal.
The item for you is the standard way we've done in the last issues is to bring to you when we know what the bond fees will be, of all professionals, and simply present a separate resolution to you so that you could see what everybody's being paid, to be transparent with that. We're about to close the last of the, of the issues that we, we did at year-end. We actually priced these bonds at year-end and we can talk more about that, but the numbers. But, we're, we've been really pleased in what we've been able to do with, with the market and thanks to our municipal advisor and the professional team. We've been, all of these deals were very efficient and very pleased, but, but my item of business is simply the resolution to approve the fees. We will be closing February 3rd and, on this transaction and, and so, on the refunding of the general obligation bonds. And, so, appreciate the opportunity to serve the city and look forward to getting to know the new council and, and working with the mayor and administration.
I have a question, whether it's collective or individual.
Just on.
Okay. So, I mean, obviously, people that are interested can see the fees. Based on the pricing, how much money are we saving, citizens? Because I didn't, I didn't see that in one of my things and I know it's significant, but I'd like to make it clear how much we're saving above and beyond just because of the fees are in there. The fees seem high. They don't seem high relative to the business, but I want to make people understand what the overall savings is to the taxpayer and this is, I'll say, you know, the cost of doing business in a professional manner.
Good afternoon. I'm Charlotte Knight Marshall. I'm with TKGN Associates and we're your municipal advisor. In answer to your question, Councilman Jenkins, your gross savings is $2,373,000. And, that represented a savings of 7.3% over your previous cost, what you were paying on the outstanding bonds that we refunded. So, even though we had a 5% coupon, we got a true interest cost of 1.87%. And, these bonds were to mature in 2019 and they're still maturing, so we didn't extend the duration. So, we kept the duration, okay? And, we also got a little bit of premium, which helped lower your true interest cost.
Awesome. Great work.
Awesome sauce.
Continue your great work. I'm glad to see this. Were there any pattern of, pattern of smiling faces when we hear your results?
Well, we should commend you on, on all four of those deals because really, all four of those, two reissues and then the new issues, all came in, you know, better than our expectations. So, you absolutely deserve credit collectively, your whole team, on those efforts.
I would like to, even though they're not here, commend the entire set of teams because we actually put together four sets of teams. All four teams performed very well. We were kind of lucky. We got, you know, some good market days and we got some not-so-good market days, but overall, we got very good performance. And, you were safe. On, on one deal alone, the new deal, the first general obligation, the first one we did, you had $14 million in premium, which you can add to projects that you wouldn't have been able to add to prior to this issue. And, we were able to get premium on every project that we did and get really good rates. So, all the team members, all the underwriters, the bond councils, the co-bond councils, the underwriters councils, the disclosure councils, you name it, and, and Bill and his, his team were, it was really good. So, thank you very much for allowing us the opportunity and we are now working on your policies. So, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely. At this point, we are at reports. Does anybody have a particular question for Property Standards? If I'm seeing none, we will move on to the revenue collection report. We should have received these electronically. If anybody had questions on those? Or Dale, you want to make a brief?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of notes. I think if you look at the, we rebounded pretty well in sales taxes. If you look at the collections overall for the year, they actually exceeded the budget amount, but they about meet what we, when we modified the projection about mid-year. We set about $120 million. They came in at 119.7, if I'm not mistaken. You also have a report there on the St. Vincent, 1% tax that'd give you an idea of what's going on there. If you look at the business classes, the interesting thing is they change each report. This time, motor vehicles are at the top, which is a good sign, rebound from where we were a few months ago when they were in the negative. Health services are still up there again. A driving factor behind that is LSU becoming a taxable institution now with their change in ownership. But, we think that bodes very well for the diversity that we have in the sales tax base. I'd also like to know in the other revenue collection, if you notice the EMS billing on the UPL, the UPL payments went down this year, about $2 million less than we thought we'd get. But, if you look overall, the percentage of our other revenue is at 99.73% in terms of what we, what we projected. So, I think that bodes very well in terms of the other revenue. Specifically, if you look at property taxes, they're actually up a little over $1 million from last year. So, that is a very good sign for the city. So, if there are any questions or anything that the council needs in addition to what's here, please let us know and we'll try and get that information to you.
And, one question about the UPL. Now, this would be the, this is the first year we, we did it for the whole year, right?
Correct.
Because the other time, we had kind of an interim year and we weren't really, our projections, we just really didn't have anything, great fidelity on what to work with to start with.
And, we also, even within this past year, Mr. Jenkins, we had some catch-up. You know, there was a little lag and so, we had a little bit greater bump than ordinarily we would guess. And, I think now that's kind of washing out. That's why we have that $2 million difference or so in what we thought, you know, we could get based on the, the early submissions that we had. But, the information that we have indicates that was our last disbursement, so the number you see, you see there's probably what the number will be going forward.
And, then, in regard to our budget, right? Because we're making some projections in there, do you think as a result of this year-end number, that is going to correlate fairly well with what we projected for 2015 budget? Or, do you think it's worth revisiting that in our 2015 budget?
I, I think we need to revisit. As a matter of fact, when I got the information, I wanted to get with, should we can just kind of see what we project for this year compared to what we actually brought in? Then, we can make some recommendations or suggestions in terms of whether or not we maintain that number. There is supposed to be some type rate increase in that whole process because that was the other part and trying to get what, what, what the reimbursement level is up a little higher. So, that may impact it. But, I want to visit with, with the Assistant CEO, visit with the guys down at Fire EMS and see if we need to adjust that number a bit.
And, I mean, for, we have a lot of background on some areas of our budget, but this is a new area that we changed something significantly in the last year and so, our projections just, we just didn't have the experience, corporate knowledge or so, to really.
Exactly.
That's why I brought it up.
And, we just got the final numbers actually today, which is why we haven't had a chance to really dig into them.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions on the revenue collections report?
Let me ask this, Mr. Chairman. Which is good that the property tax did increase. What was your contribution at to?
Two things, I think. Generally, the assessed values tend, even when the rest of the country was going down, when ours maintained and actually went up a little bit, and additional developments.
Oh, that's a good sign.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And, Ms. Scott, I believe, has distributed the, the Bond Forfeiture Report, the Surety Bond Forfeiture Reports. Anybody have a question about that? Should have received an overview as well as specific about what amounts were collected?
I would like more. I'd like to finish that one lawsuit out there. Would be nice.
A big one and a long-lasting one.
It's been on there.
We're working on it.
In fairness, as much as I'd like to put the honest on us, I could easily point the finger at some other organization that may be dragging their feet on this, but that's different.
All right. That being said, we'll move through the, so that's the, that concludes our reports for today. At our next regularly scheduled meeting, we'll have a master plan committee report. And, at this point, we're at public hearings. We do not have a public hearing scheduled today. And, so, we move to adding items to the agenda. We do have one item. Art, would you like to?
Yes. It's Resolution 9, suspending the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located in, at Greenleaf Park in Providence for the Winter Sprinter 5K on February the 21st, 2015.
Is there a motion to?
Chairman.
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry. First, we need to ask if there is anybody who would like to speak for adding this item to the agenda? And, is there anybody present who would like to speak against adding this item to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to add this item to our agenda.
Okay. All right. We've got a motion by Councilman Corbin, with second by Councilman Jenkins. Everybody, if you could cast your votes. Looks like all votes are in and that's a 7-0 to add the item to the agenda. That takes us to public comments. We have the following request to speak on Resolution Number 4, Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M110, Shreveport, Louisiana 71101. I want to welcome the new council members and Ollie Tyler today. First of all, I want to say that the reason I came to talk about this today is because I know that there's been a lot of people out there who just think that maybe drinking alcohol late at night or even in the daytime, that they enjoy causing a lot of disturbance, which really bothers me over in my area, or probably just anywhere else. And, I'm really in favor of this suspending alcoholic beverages. I think it's just ridiculous that people who do this try to cause the disturbance of others who don't want to be bothered. I hope that y'all really go through with this, that you really rethink this carefully and just go through with it so that they will not be allowed to do that. It means a lot to me as it does other people.
Well, Sammy, I just want to clarify. So, the, the ordinance that, that you wrote down there, that's allowing for there to be a celebration to take place for the Cinco de Mayo Festival. So, it's allowing at a facility that, that is a restaurant to have sort of a party at their restaurant. So, that's what, that's what that particular ordinance is on.
Maybe I was mistaken.
Well, that's okay, but I just wanted to make sure you understood with the one that's before today is in reference to.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to clarify what I was trying to say, not that I was trying to mix up anything.
Not a problem at all. Not a problem.
But, I just wanted to be known that I do not like alcoholic stuff and you're not going to catch me drinking any of that stuff. It doesn't like me and I sure don't like it.
Well, thank you so much, Sammy. We appreciate your input. All right. And, so, that is the only public comment I have about any agenda item that I've seen. So, that brings us to confirmations and appointments. We don't have any confirmations or appointments to be considered today, but we do have some that we've received that we'll talk about later in the meeting for vote on the 27th. But, at this point, we can continue on to the consent agenda.
We have no items under the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
All right. We will move through to that. So, we will go to the regular agenda legislation. And, just for the benefit of the council, we have not previously in, in recent years used the consent agenda very heavily, but there has been some discussion about trying to start using that. And, being that this agenda was published kind of before some of that discussion took place, we're going to honor the, the way this agenda has been published this time, but in the future, we're going to try to start using the consent agenda for those items that are largely procedural and that we don't expect a large degree of debate to happen about those items. We'll start placing those on the consent agenda. And, when you receive your draft agenda, you will be able to let us know if you'd like that to be not in the consent agenda. So, we'll go, we'll start using that going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I believe our discussion was that when we get to the consent agenda, the motion will be to approve the items on the consent agenda and they will not be considered one at a time. So, when you get. So when you get the agenda before it's finally published with the public, if you see anything on there that you want to have discussion about, then we would encourage you to let us know so that we can put it on.
So that we can put it in the other portion of the agenda. And we will follow up with a little bit more clarification of how that will work. I think it should be a tool that allows us to move through the meetings a little faster. And so we are going to give us, give it a try and that will start at the next meeting. So we'll certainly communicate with all the council members, you know, how that, how that will operate. But for today, I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention. That was a good suggestion from some of the new council members and some of those of us who've seen that section on the agenda for a few years and thought it might be more useful. So we're going to give it a try. But today, we'll move on to regular agenda legislation. Mr. Thompson, please proceed.
Number 1, suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 and Chapter 106 of the Code relative to the Mardi Gras pre-party and otherwise divvying with respect.
Send lead, Mr. Chair.
Second. So we have got a motion, second. All right. We've got a motion and a second. And if you could cast your votes. And we have a 7-0 vote to approve Resolution Number 1.
Number 2 approves the fees of professionals in conjunction with the issuance of not exceeding $27,500,000 general obligation bonds in one or more series for the purpose of refunding certain existing indebtedness of the City of Shreveport.
Send lead.
Second. And we've got a 7-0 vote to approve Resolution Number 2. On to Resolution Number 3.
It authorizes the mayor to suspend certain provisions of certain chapters of the City of Shreveport Code of Ordinances to grant temporary approval for uses and operations related to the filming or production of movies within the City of Shreveport.
Send lead.
Second.
Try again, Mr. Speaker.
And we've got a 7-0 vote for the approval of Resolution Number 3.
Number 4, suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located at 6614 Yuri Drive for a Cinco de Mayo celebration on Tuesday, May the 5th, 2015.
Send lead.
Second. And we've got a 7-0 vote for approval of Resolution Number 4. On to Number 5.
It allocates funds to specific not-for-profit organizations for funds budgeted and other charges in the general fund.
Send lead.
Second.
Mr. Bradford.
We've got a 7-0 vote for approval of Resolution Number 5.
Mr. Chairman, Resolution Number 6, Resolution Number 9 rather was added. It can be considered at this time if you'd like for me to read it.
Please do.
It suspends the effects of certain provisions of Chapter 10 relative to alcoholic beverages and Chapter 106 relative to zoning for property located at Greenleaf Park in Providence for the Winter Sprinter 5K on February the 21st, 2015.
Send lead, Mr. Chair.
Second. Oliver, it looks like it didn't log your vote yet. All right. We've got a 7-0 vote for Resolution Number 9.
Renowned introduction, resolutions not to be adopted prior to January the 27th. Number 6 authorizes the use of certain equipment by sports spectrum race management. Number 7 authorizes the acceptance of a donation of a title sponsorship for the 2015 North Louisiana Economic Development Annual Meeting. Number 8 authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Wenchell and Joseph LLC.
Send lead for introduction.
Second. And that's a 7-0 vote for introduction.
Renowned introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to January the 27th, 2015. Number 1 amends the 2015 Riverfront Development Fund budget. Number 2 amends the 2015 Community Development Fund budget. Number 3 amends the 2015 General Fund budget. Number 4 amends the 2015 General Fund budget also. Number 5 amends the 2015 Capital Improvements budget. Number, those are all of them.
Send lead.
Here was the second. All right. Thank you. And we've got a 7-0 vote for introduction. Mr. Thompson, would you proceed with ordinances on second reading and final passage?
She is on second reading and final passage. 163 closes and abandons an alley to the east of Missouri Avenue and north of Greenwood Road in Block 9 of the Queensborough Annex in Section 10. Township 17, 14 West.
Send lead.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, who made the second?
Corbin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Bradford.
Is, is my understanding that this ordinance is regarding Willis Knighten's request to close the alley?
I believe that is correct.
There's another one. I asked the, there was some concern about myself and maybe Councilman Bowman voting on some issues that regards Willis Knighten. I asked the Attorney Glass to look into that. Do you have an opinion on that?
Yes, Mr. Bradford. As we discussed, of course, there's many provisions of the Ethics Code, but the one that these ordinances, I think there's this one and then there's a zoning ordinance. Brings to mind for you and Mr. Bowman is that a public official should not vote on a matter in which his employer has a substantial economic interest.
Yes.
And so you had questioned, well, what does substantial economic interest mean? And that's going to be a fact decision or not a fact decision, but a, that is going to vary depending on what the issue is in front of the council. The definition of a substantial economic interest in this state statute is an economic interest which is of greater benefit to the public servant than to a general, or not the public servant, in this case, you're talking about the public servant's employer, than to a general class or group of persons. So it's not, it doesn't have to be a high economic interest, it just has to be one that's greater than the general public has. So at your request, we talked to, I talked to the administrator of the State Ethics Commission, an attorney, and gave her the example of the two things that are on the agenda today, one being an alley closure. And the thing about an alley closure, which Willis Knighten is requesting, once it's closed, the ownership goes to the adjoining property owners. So they would gain that piece of property. And she was of the opinion that, you know, that would be a substantial economic interest and that it would be best if you would recuse yourself on that vote. I guess the other thing, and well, and I'll go ahead and mention the zoning ordinance as we're talking about, it is a less direct substantial economic interest, but she still felt that due to the increased ability to use that parcel of property in its operations, that that would also qualify. So I guess the bottom line is that that's what the rule is. Everything that ever has to do with Willis Knighten will not necessarily fall under that. You'll just have to kind of look at any situation that arises.
Thank you. Again, that definition is very ambiguous when you talk about substantial. My definition of substantial is different, but we will, I will guide myself by your.
Oh, could I mention one, one other thing is you do always have the ability to do one of two things. You can always talk to the attorneys at the State Ethics Commission. They will give you an informal opinion. And that's informal and it's not the opinion of the board. And you can also request a formal written advisory opinion from the board. The only problem with that is that you need about a month or so lead time and we don't always have that, but just wanted y'all to know that those are also, you know, backup possibilities.
If you know something is going to come before the MPC at the beginning of the process, then you may have time to request that opinion.
Right. And the more lead time, the better.
Good. All right. Well, thank you for that report and to be honest with you, I think Councilman Bowman probably need to recuse himself because I think I'd be okay because Jim Elroy claims that I really don't work for Willis Knighten, I just draw a paycheck from him. Thank you so much.
Okay. I think we are still waiting on Councilwoman Lynch. It looks like maybe it hasn't recorded your vote. You may have pushed it, but it didn't record it. Okay. Okay. So we have got a.
Wait, Jim, I'm sorry.
I think we've got a 6-0, but we may need to.
It should be 5.
It should be 5-0. And on there, I think you can push the abstain button.
Abstain, yeah. Could we vote by hand? All in favor, vote yes. Those who abstain, he vote no. How many vote yes?
Those who are abstaining, raise your hand at this point. Okay.
So it, you get that vote?
I thought I saw three hands go up.
They voted yes. Okay.
One and two. Thank you.
I'm ready to work.
So the passage of Ordinance 163 is a 5 to 0 with 2 abstaining. Yes. And now on to Ordinance 164, Mr. Thompson.
It amends and reenacts certain sections of Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances relative to utilities and otherwise dividing with respect there too with one amendment. The amendment just changes the date that it would be affected to February.
Send moved on the amendment.
Second.
And that's a 6 to 1 vote on the amendment.
Send moved as amended, Mr. Chairman.
Second by the chair.
Try again. As amended.
And one.
Mr. Bowman.
Mr. Bradford, it looks like it didn't record yours.
I'm sorry.
Oh, it just hasn't recorded your vote.
I'm sorry.
And we have got a 6-1 vote approving that.
165 declares certain pain acquired by the Department of Community Development for the Paint Show. Shreveport Program.
And we still need a recorded vote from Councilman Flurry and Councilman Bradford. And that's a 7-0 passage.
166 will close and abandon a portion of the alley dedication in the 300 blocks of East Merrick Street.
Send lead.
Bowman Lane subdivision.
Second.
And that's a 7-0 passage.
167 is a zoning matter, C-68-14. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of Pinnix Street and Hearn Avenue.
Send move. Second.
And that is a, let's see. So on this one, Councilman Bowman and Bradford, if you could register the abstain button, I think that should log in your vote, the ABS button. And there we go. We've got a 5-0 passage with 2 abstaining.
168 is a zoning matter, C-87-14. It amends Chapter 106, rezoning property located on the west side of.
Second.
Centel Street, 370 feet south of Dalton Street from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to B2A Business Park District with site approval, with site plan approval.
We've got a motion second and 7-0 vote.
169 is a zoning matter, C-89-14. It rezones property founded by Leadbetter, Earl.
Send move.
Wallace and Hibbert.
Second.
And that passes with a 7-0 vote.
17 is a zoning matter, C-90-14, rezones property located on the northwest corner of Mayfair Drive at the intersection of.
Send move.
Drive.
Try again, Mr. Bradford.
And we've got a passage of 7-0.
171 is a zoning matter, C-92-14, rezones property located on the southwest corner of Milton Street and Murdis Avenue from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to R2 Suburban Multifamily Residence District with site plan approval. That's Mr. Bowman's district.
Send lead, Mr. Chair.
And it's needing to register a vote from, there we go. Now we've got all of them. That passes 7-0.
172 amends a 2015 downtown parking.
Send move.
Budget to purchase and install new parking.
Send second.
Sorry, I heard one from. Oh, yeah, I didn't, I didn't hear it. My vote, click. There we go. Passes with 7-0.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda. We are now at the table.
Are there any tabled items to be considered?
That was some discussion yesterday about Ordinance Number 12 of 2014 concerning the changing the name of Skeeple Chase Plaza Drive to Gregory Kirby Plaza.
Is there any desire to take action on this today? Are we waiting for some additional feedback?
I didn't, I didn't get in touch with anybody yesterday.
Okay.
And I would just go ahead, go along, go ahead with what we talked about yesterday and just.
Remove it.
Remove it.
So you want to make that motion?
Second.
Okay. So we've got a motion to remove the item from the table and a second.
From the agenda.
From the agenda, I'm sorry. And that's a motion from Bowman, second by Flurry.
Correct.
The vote on that passes with a 7-0 vote.
The other item, I don't think that there was any discussion about removing it. There are no appeals to be voted on today, Mr. Chairman. So we're now on reports from offices, boards and committees.
And the first thing, I will just say is that I do have a draft list of the committee assignments for the new council, so I want to share that with all the council members and make sure that everyone's comfortable with the assignments there. And we still have a little bit of time to adjust them if need be, but I do have that draft list available that I can share. And we'll have council staff to email that to everybody tomorrow. But we have prepared that, so be on the lookout for that. Are there any standing committees that have a report to make at this time?
No, but I have a general comment, if I may.
Wonderful.
By the way, Lenis sent a very, what I thought were very informative audits. And obviously looking forward to that, whoever's in that audit and finance committee at least to discuss some of those findings. I thought, great job by the staff. I thought the whole discussion in those audits were very worthwhile. And so hopefully, whoever's ever on that audit and finance committee, that'll be some of the areas they start with because I thought very revealing and pointed out some areas that could really help, you know, collectively our citizens and the city at large. So good job on that.
You're absolutely right. And the Audit and Finance Committee is a very informative committee to sit on. So those of you who've been assigned to it who are new, I think it's a great committee to really learn the operations of the city and I'm sure you'll enjoy that, that service on that committee. Well, this brings us to the most exciting part and that is the clerk's report.
Since the paper beat me to it and the television stations will announce that the mayor has made two appointments and they can be voted on on January the 27th. One is Mr. William C. Bradford for Deputy City Attorney and the other is Bryony Crawford for CAO.
What was that first name again, clerk?
The second.
First name you mentioned.
It's a different.
Nice name, I like that.
Oh, all right. Is there a motion for the council to resolve a second of the committee?
Send move.
And let's see, and a motion.
Any relation to you, Mr. Bradford?
I refuse to answer that question.
On the last, on the, on the. One day, we're going to need a Bradford family tree so that we can answer all of those questions.
But I'm sure there's going to be some interesting email makes sense.
Sam and I spent a year and a half trading emails with various people. A lot of people go.
Make a motion to approve any, these are 22nd minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second for the approval of the December. Okay, I've got a motion and a second for the approval of the December minute.
Mr. Bowman.
And we've got a 7-0 for passage on the minutes. And Ms. Mayor, do we have any communications?
We do not.
Thank you.
Not today.
All right, and do any members of the council have any communications at this time? Yeah? Okay. Well, I will just say again, I know it's been mentioned, but welcome very much to the new members of the council. We're excited to have you here. It's, I think, a good combination of some voices who've been here for a little bit, and then some new eyes, so look forward to working with all of you. At this point, we are ready for public comments, and I have a few public comments here. When I call your name, please say your name for the record and your address, and y'all will be given three minutes. We are going to try to start out the year sticking to that three-minute timeframe, so let's try to...we'll at least shoot for it as a goal. But the first one I have is Pastor Mays, and I see him in the front row.
Pastor Mays, New Macedonia Baptist Church, 335 East Azalea. Congratulations, new council members, as well as the new chairman. Amen. You all are a breath of fresh air. I came before you all in regards to...we already talked about the streets continuously, but I want to share something with you that was shared with the previous administration about police misconduct. Last year, in March, because I am an advocate for speaking out for people, and I believe in the scripture, I've been preaching for over 20 years, and the scripture declares, "When good men do nothing, evil prevails." So this I have in my hand was a malicious attempt to stop me from advocating for the people of this city. These charges, there were four felony charges. The detective, Detective Frazier, did not ask any member of my church in regards to a donation that was given by a person that we had helped for eight years. The District Attorney's Office has dismissed every charge against me. I was innocent from the beginning, and I stand innocent now. And so that's the reason why I have asked for a citizen review board, because when these people that feel that they have a right to maliciously target someone and to damage their reputation, who have been doing work in the community, helping people out of their own pocket, making sure that the sanitation workers get the bonus that they needed, and have helped homeless people for years. So the bill of information and the indictment, they searched everything in my bank records from our church, and everything that came up against me was a lie. This was a letter where we bought a bus, Councilman Everson, and this detective, Detective Frazier, knew that we had bought the bus, and he charged me with it anyway. So it was a malicious attempt to try to tear down the reputation of people that are doing work. They think that they can silence you through malicious intents. So I came before you all today, and I'm getting the information for you, because for our new mayor, it's because you all are a breath of fresh air. I'm so glad that District F has selected someone with integrity that's gonna stand by what's right, and I'm so glad that Sister Bowman's son is here, because his mother was a fighter, and he's a fighter as well. So I just wanted to bring this to you guys' attention, the reason why there is a need for a citizen review board. So when these individuals step out of line and maliciously attack people that has been doing good work for 20 years now, and the DA's office thanked them...
That's the time, can you wrap it up in the...
Yeah, I'm finna do. I'm asking for additional time. Time, well, I'm not finna wrap it up, no.
I'll move for another one minute.
Okay, okay. The DA's office, because this has been a cloud over my head, thank you for the extra minute, but this has been a cloud over my head for eight months, a lie that has been told to the public to try to stop me from speaking. I worked it with your campaign, Mr. Everson, and have worked it with many others, and they know that I'm a man of integrity. So I want to thank my attorney, Peter Flowers, who knew that I was innocent. I want to thank my church, who had wrote a letter to the detective of my innocence. And this man continuously tried to prosecute me, and it all was a lie. The media is gonna mention it on tonight to rebuttal the lie that was put out. Congratulations to you guys. I look forward to talking with you all. I think you all are gonna work good together, a little old and a little new, and get some things done for this city. Congratulations to you, Mayor. I thank God for you. I think you're gonna do excellent work, excellent job, because you're ready to go to work and get the streets fixed, because you all are concerned about this community. God bless you. I will still stand up for right and righteousness. I will never run for office, a political office, but whenever there is someone that is being mistreated, lied on, and talked about, I'm gonna be there to stand up for them. Just so happened, it happened to me, and hopefully we can get something done. I'm preparing the information to give to your secretary, and so that you will see exactly what happened and how they maliciously tried to prosecute me, and all charges now has been dismissed. Thank you very much, God bless you.
Thank you, Pastor Mays, and I know you're relieved to have those charges dismissed, and congratulations.
Your thanks.
We appreciate you sharing that with us today.
All right.
The next I have, from the speaker request, is Ken Kraft.
Ken Kraft at 157 Archer, 71105. Kind of a flashback to a proposal I first made, I guess, under Mayor Hazel Beard, so it's not new. And it's a different task force than a citizens' task force. It's simply more appropriate for two weeks when your infrastructure group gets together on the streets. The Lincoln on the Lincoln, the penny on the $5 bill, the 2/10ths of a percent. It's kind of like a 999 plan. No, not Herman Cain's plan, not Matthew Stafford, Tony Romano, and Drew Brees. Nine times the prior mayor and the prior council didn't agree on a proposal for streets with the sprinkled charge tax. Nine times the citizens of this community of Shreveport have agreed for streets. Nine out of nine, going back 40 years. Seven on bond issues, two on sales taxes. The lowest just vote is about 54.3% under Mayor Billy T. Hannity Jr., today Reagan beat Carter, so November 4th of 1980, I guess. They've always said yes. The other nine is $9 million that the plan would bring in for a three-year program. Y'all may have a better solution, a more equitable alternative. I've not thought of one. I think the voters can be trusted, given the projects that are going to be done, the overlay that's going to be accomplished in the next three years, doesn't need a bond issue yet. We just sold the second set of bonds recently, after some squabbling for a period of a year and a half. So we're moving forward. Congratulations to IT Director and Dan Thomas's Ohio State Buckeyes. Looks like the old Bucks beat the old Ducks, and I understand the Affleck Duck today is quacking up. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ken. The next name for public comments is Mr. Craig Lee.
Good afternoon. Council, new council, Mayor. I remember you already. Craig Lee, 1035 Houston Street. Want to welcome the new council people. I think this is going to be a good session. We have some challenges. I was looking at YouTube a few days ago, and a lot of times, people think issues in Shreveport are unique to Shreveport, and the same issue that has been plaguing the city, infrastructure, streets, bridges. I was listening to Mayor Kasim Reed in Atlanta, Georgia, and guess what? Streets, bridges, infrastructure, bonds, same issues. When you have cities that are over 100-plus years old, that's what you're basically gonna be facing. I ended last year by challenging the city council, there are some things that you guys are gonna have to do in laying the foundation, and this goes with you, too. Ms. Tyler, we're gonna have to grow the city's population by 300,000 over the next 20 years, because we're gonna have to infuse revenue in this city. And as a byproduct of the impact of the high fares at the airport, the stress on our inner-city core, we're gonna have to do that, and that means we're gonna have to have a team concept in the city of Shreveport. So I don't plan to hear a lot of fussing and fighting over the next four years. I plan to hear some Oliver Jenkins, you know, economic development mode, working with Councilman Bradford and Ms. Lynch, and then we're gonna elevate this city, and the next time I come up here, we're gonna have about a $5 billion budget, and then we're gonna be able to pay for about, you know, 30% of the streets every year. We're gonna get the Choice Communities grants done in Allen Dale Lakeside, Queensborough, and we're gonna actually make Shreveport be all that it can actually be if we believe that we're working on the same team. We had one of the gubernatorial candidates speak today at Tuesday Morning Breakfast, and the state of Louisiana faces some major challenges, but we never work together as a team, and that is going to actually be the challenge. We're preparing for our seventh AMCC Antoine Black History Celebration in February. We'll be inviting you guys out, have that information, but a lot of the proposals that we'll be bringing forth, we definitely look forward to working with you guys and Ms. Tyler. And lastly, the Black Arts Coalition, wanted to make sure that I made mention to Mayor Tyler, because she's advocated support for them, that we definitely elevate funding for that group, Promosia, Ron Hardish Group, Ms. Gloria Gibson, several other entities, because tourism is going to be a big component as we push forth in terms of generating economic development for the city of Shreveport. Thank you.
Chairman.
Thank you so much, Craig.
And let me ask you a question.
Yes, Councilman Bradford, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairman, Mr. Jim. Thank you for coming, and thank you for that very progressive vision of Shreveport. You mentioned Atlanta starting out. In 19...in the 1960s, Atlanta created a theme. You know what that theme was?
No, I don't remember that from 60.
A city...
He wasn't born yet, but that was a city. 67.
City too busy to hate. Ah. And it was...it 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 came from the mayor, offhashly, who saw great opportunities for Atlanta. Atlanta was struggling, challenging metropolis like Shreveport is. You've mentioned some great ideas, success of Shreveport. If we can adopt some of those items, I think we're...we can be on our way. What do you feel? I mean, you've been here, you've been back here at least 20 years, involved in various community activities. What do you see as been the hindrance of Shreveport's growth?
Well, you know, like I said, when we look at, when I got back here as a pharmaceutical sales rep, I'm gonna be honest with you, I didn't think that this much chaos existed. I really didn't know why there was so much intellectual capital that left the city, and I didn't know why the city was in such chaos. But after having left Corp. America, I came to understand real quickly that you've had so much intellectual capital to leave, and that stems the tide of ideas, because all this stuff is about ideas, and that's what we've been lacking, that creative class. So what ends up happening, we try to replicate what other cities are doing without actually tapping into our own ideas. We had a great meeting with Bonnie Moore over the break, and dealing with Choice Communities, and it's a situation where we got what we need, but at the end of the day, we gotta embrace it. We gotta embrace our own intellectual capital. You know, we fought for contract procurement opportunities. We're gonna have to have black businesses tap into about 25 to 30% of the contracts. Unfortunately, contract procurement opportunities for black business owners is probably a dismal 3% to 4%. I mean, this is just a fact of the matter. And so if the black business community cannot grow, that's going to remain idle, and there's a mentality in the city of Shreveport that, oh, we'll grow one section of the city and let everything else decay. It's not gonna happen, because you gotta promote the entire city, and if the entire city is not growing, then people are not gonna wanna actually come to the place. It's the same mentality that I see throughout the whole state. South Louisiana fights North Louisiana, and Louisiana suffers as a whole. South Shreveport, and I have no problem with southeast Shreveport getting schools or whatever, we just have to basically infuse a different mindset. I mean, Jared and I went to Fair Park together in Queensborough, though I live in District B, we...that is a bastion of opportunity, but you see all these vacant lots going on. Nobody's gonna actually come and just put up new houses. So we have a plethora of things that has to go on, but we gotta embrace the intellectual capital that we have, because most of my colleagues said they're not coming back here until they see some things happen. And we got multimillionaires that look like me and you in Atlanta, Georgia, and other places that are from here, and they're some of the wealthiest people in the world. Juanita Palabranco, namely. But she's not gonna invest in Shreveport until she see Shreveport does something. If she can't fly in to our airport without paying $500, $600 more to fly into Dallas and then drive over, we've already lost at that point, and that's why I said in terms of growing the population. One young lady was so excited to do a petition for Southwest, you know, bring Southwest, and I'm like, that's not gonna happen, we don't have enough implements. And she thought about just getting a petition signed that Southwest was gonna come. It don't happen like that. Southwest said that there needs to be a total population within an hour's drive time of Shreveport of 800,000. But within an hour's drive time, Shreveport is the largest city in that hour. So we've suffered because we have not stimulated our own economic development.
Mr. Lee, thank you, and I want to engage you some more of your thought. I think you're on target with some of these things that you mentioned. Thank you for coming up and making those remarks.
Thanks.
Thank you very much. And the last public comment that I have is Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. Just wanted to apologize about the goof up earlier, but I did want to say as well that this past Sunday morning, I really had to come to a very important decision because of all this bad weather that we had, because with all the cold and wet that we were dealing with, I had to decide, do I stay at home, or do I go ahead and try to go to Springs and Grace Baptist Church, as I usually do, and I'm glad that I did, because I called my cab driver and asked him, did the roads or bridges freeze over? He said no. And I said, well, in that case, I'm going. So he came by and picked me up, and I got to Springs and Grace Baptist Church. I was very happy, just thinking about Psalm 37, 3 through 5, and it talks about trusting the Lord and do good, dwell in the land and enjoy safe pasture. Delight yourself in the Lord, and he will give you the desires of your heart. Commit your way to the Lord, trust in him, and he will do this, which I'm glad I did. And once I was able to get there, I told a few people, they understood. I was very happy, because I know that staying at home was not really on my agenda. So I'm always happy to be at Springs and Grace Baptist Church, and I don't know if anyone has ever passed by there on 6300 Hearn Avenue, but that's the church I go to. It used to be the former Sunset Acres Baptist Church for many years, and if you ever got that way, you know, if you ever want to drop by on a Sunday morning and visit, you'd be welcome to. Not that I'm trying to influence anyone on that, but if you'd like to, it would really be nice.
Thank you so much, Sammy. All right, that concludes our public comments, and if there's no objection, the committee can rise and report and declare this meeting adjourned. There we go. Congrats, everybody, on a pretty good one. Yeah.
Good morning. Good morning. Good morning.